Six o'clock, call the meeting to order, ask clerk to take roll.
DeVore.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Sarchet.
Here.
Reciting on the agenda is approval of the agenda, I have no additions or corrections, I would take a motion.
Facken.
Roll call.
Vogel. Walters.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item is public comments, it's time and place for comments for items, any items other than those in a public hearing. Who wishes to speak, please come to podium, say your name and address for the record. Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda, I'd take a motion.
Just a quick, I don't wanna necessarily pull nine or 10, but I did sort of wonder, my inclination here is if we're gonna use Don's time on an hourly basis, is it better served sort of in-house than WRA and MPO meetings? I don't at all question, you know, the full-time person going to those meetings, but is this something that, you know, for some of those that are, that don't necessarily have a consequential item on that meeting, is it an opportunity for one of us to go? And I say that with full knowledge of the MPO's reputation and their beings, I'm not looking to go myself, but on a rotational basis or something, and I want to get your input obviously onto it. Again, don't question the permanent role, but to me, if your time could be spent here, I would be more in favor of that, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's an either-or thing too, so I just gotta talk about that.
So we do have alternates, so for both, for both of these positions, we do have alternates, so he's just replacing where a previous city administrator was in that role as primary. So we do have alternates, and I would say we could review those meetings before they come up, and if the alternate is better suited to go, depending on what's on the agenda, I'd say we could do them on a case-by-case.
That works.
And, and you have to designate who your primary and alternates, you can't rotate somebody to show up, otherwise they won't be allowed to sit both.
So make a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Second. Roll call.
Walters.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Vogel.
Motion carries, next item is new business under new business development agreement with MJR Development and Polk County. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the proposed development agreement with Polk County Iowa and MJR Developments LLC. I will ask the clerk when the notice is published.
April 12th.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
It's time, I'd like staff to provide the report. Who is speaking tonight? Anyone?
I don't really have much familiarity with this, I apologize.
Jared, you want to speak to anything?
Basically, this is just tied to the Big Creek Valley development, so.
Questions, comments? Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against?
I...
Cliff?
I know it's, it's your, your, its development is with NAP, his first development. Is that what it is?
I guess, what are you asking?
I just wanted to verify, you know.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know, I know where the location is, I just am not familiar with the terms of the agreement.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah, I mean, it was kind of, this area was originally part of the tournament club of Iowa, and they set up the original TIP agreement with NAP Properties and Polk County for that, so this is kind of included in that area, but I was, that happened actually before my time, so I don't have a lot of background on that or how that rolled into this one.
Summarize a little bit, it's a urban renewal area, it's set up by Polk County.
Yeah.
Now it's within city limits of Polk City, and Polk County will collect it, reimburse the developer, public improvement.
Yeah.
And the city will get a portion for LMI purposes.
Yeah. Make sure they knew what's going on.
Thanks, Cliff, we don't hear from you very often, so nice to hear your voice. Anyone else present who wishes to be heard for or against the agreement? Questions up here?
So this is gonna be handled just like the golf course was originally, Polk County is handling the TIF debt, they're carrying that, not us.
That's correct, and they'll, they'll collect TIF, I think it's an every-six-month reimbursement based on collection. And it's like 58.8% will go to developers, and about 41% goes to the city.
Okay, yeah, I remember it. And LMI, LMI funds that we are receiving. That'll, that'll open that up again.
Okay, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. Second. Roll call.
DeVore.
Yes.
Vogel. Walters.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Motion carries, item B, consider motion to approve resolution 2019-29 authorizing development agreement with Polk County Iowa and MJR Developments LLC. Key to motion. Second. Roll call.
Walters.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Motion carries, item two under new business, consider motion to approve resolution 2019-31 approving construction drawings for Big Creek Valley Plat 1, and the notice in your package, there's actually a couple different resolutions of 2019-31, and so I'm gonna pitch over to Kathleen here real quick and just let her clarify what we're doing here.
Yeah, these are the construction drawings for the first plat in Big Creek Valley for the easternmost, about 35 lots, so it's the first phase of development, there will be a second phase of development, you know, down the road next year or after. The construction drawings, we had approved them and they were ready to go, but kind of at the 11th hour, we found out that the US Post Office is considering, is working with developer and maybe requiring a centralized mailbox location, so we're kind of working through the details of that, which may include a, the need for a temporary turnaround. We may want to, depending on the number of clusters that are all together, we may actually want to put it on the outlot instead of in the right-of-way, as typical. So we have a few details to work out with that, and I apologize for the 11th hour of it, so that's why we put the two, just in case it wound up going back to the individual clusters, we could have approved the whole set of construction drawings tonight, we're not there yet, it sounds like it may impact the centralized clusters, so. So we're asking for some more time to work out the paving improvements and issues like who's gonna be maintaining, you know, making sure the homeowners association, for example, is set up, is gonna be set up to do snow removal on the, on the mailbox cluster pad and sidewalks, just some issues like that, and we don't want to rush that through since it's really the first time we've done that in Polk City, so. However, approval of the construction drawings for the water main and sanitary sewer only allows the developer to go ahead and submit those applications to DNR and get started on those, nothing with the mailbox clusters is gonna affect water or sanitary sewer, so. So at this point in time, we're recommending the resolution that says approval of the construction drawings for public sanitary sewer and water main.
So, I know we're not voting on that, but as you talk with them, I would push back very, very strongly on what they want to do, and try not to come into this too jaded with my own personal perspective, but having moved and having originally had a cluster mailbox that was three away from two other boxes, the plan typically does not take into account what's in the best interest of the residents, it does for the drivers and the route, so you have, not that it really counts for anything, you might have my full support to push back on every little, and I'm to the point where get rid of the cluster mailboxes and put them back to mailboxes, because I don't think we're...
Yeah, the post office won't deliver mail, man.
Then they need to do what's in the best, I mean, because they, they just number them north to south, and then at the end, you've got one in the southeast corner that's walking, I know it's gotta be within 400 feet or whatever our code says, and mine wasn't, and that was thankfully how I was able to, but people don't know that, and then they come back to the city, so sorry to give it some...
And honestly, in talking with the developer, I'm not really sure, I think it was the post office that suggested the cluster mailbox.
Sure it is, that's a problem.
You know, and, and, but I don't know, there's a difference between suggestion and them requiring it, and...
Right, and, and I would do no less than what we're required to do, in terms of looking at where they have them, again, within 400 feet, and not one for the whole, how many units are down there?
Well, eventually it'll be 65, depending on where the ones, it depends on how many of them along hug would go down that direction. So it would be probably at least three clusters, and they may in fact require a parcel, which they may start requiring everywhere, is a separate mailbox or parcels, because of the online purchasing, they say they're getting more parcels, so you may wind up with an extra one. So even if you have them in people's front yards, you wind up with two in your front yard instead of one, which...
There's no way you can have a cluster down there and be within 400 feet of your hub?
No, you wouldn't be.
Just to give you some feedback here, we had originally proposed three locations for the cluster on this first phase, and took that to post office and thought, Matt, part of this, push back and said, everything centralized, that's their, yeah, their... Basically, what it would amount to is almost a miniature post office.
Right.
Because it ends up being actually five clusters it'll take to service all 65 of those.
And honestly, in this one, I mean, if it becomes a standard, it could be a real problem if you have a subdivision that's all 65-foot lots. I'm not sure even where you would put it, where this one, at least there is a, there's kind of an outlot there that's gonna, so there's, there isn't a location where you could do it without it being in somebody's front yard, I guess that's the plus side.
So another reason to push back with the precedent-setting aspect of this, and Jared, I would say do whatever, I mean, highlight the code and, and you're required to do what the code says and not one.
Yeah. And I think that's where we'd just like to pull the city into that discussion.
Absolutely.
With the post office and trying to...
That is reflective on us, again, my, my personal experience aside, they don't complain with post office typically, they, they, well, they do, they also do, so. And it is on us for not forcing, but I think...
We did have a meeting with the post office back in January, Mike and Gary and I, we're all there, and they talked about centralized, and they kind of showed you examples, but they never said that that was gonna be a requirement. So in January, we weren't looking, so I was kind of surprised when this arose at the last minute.
That would take an ordinance change on our part, too.
Well, they get to, what they said at the meeting is they have the ultimate control, because if they don't like it, they won't deliver mail there, just...
So they can't make us change ours, they just won't bring mail to our people.
Yeah, that's kind of, so you gotta work with them, so.
Well, and in the past, we have, and we've always more than met them halfway, but they don't seem to want to return that halfway part, so.
And they now, they've kind of reorganized where they have, instead of having the local mailbox, you know, postmaster reviewing them, they actually go to a centralized location who's reviewing, most of them in Iowa and some in Wisconsin and Illinois, I, I mean, it was a kind of a multi-state territory, so they're a little more removed from individual cities, too, so. So that's kind of, again, we learned some time to kind of work through this.
Godspeed, Jared.
That all happened, came together about 10 o'clock Friday, so.
Yeah.
We had everything ready to go for today, and then that popped up, I guess the only other comment I had is, I think definitely the paving, we need to hold back on it. Wouldn't appreciate if we could look at the storm sewer, like you said you ran all the calcs, maybe storm sewer contingent on it.
Yeah, I don't, the only issue is that there's one of the easements that hadn't been signed yet, but in terms of the storms, the outlets, you know, those are part of the, yeah.
That's basically just from my perspective, the contractors, so that they get things started in their hands.
Good luck with the mailbox stuff. I take a motion on 2019-31, the version that Kathleen referenced.
Someone?
Second. Roll call.
Sarchet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yep.
Motion carries, item three, consider motion to authorize Snyder and Associates engineering agreement in the amount of $18,200 to provide engineering services related to preparation of construction documents, provision of bid phase and construction phase services for the 2019 street repair project, Mike mentioned this at our meeting a couple weeks ago, and Mike, I don't know if you've got anything else you want to add, or will this move on?
It is what, we've done this pretty much every year, this is their contract to come in and inspect and bid this street repair project, and there's repairs all over the area, we picked the, excuse me, we're picking the ones that kind of get the best bang for the buck, with like manholes that are involved, infiltration, those type of things, along with street repairs. So that's where we're at with it this year, and you'll see more of that when they bring back plans.
I'm gonna ask my standard question, because I know it's gonna be asking me, is there anything happening in the original part of town? Or will we wait until we do the whole overlay?
Yeah, we have to wait for the whole overlay, with the exception of, there are a couple of really bad areas.
There are.
And we do have, we have quotes on those to overlay, I think it's a two-inch overlay, just to keep a cap on it, so it doesn't literally destroy on us, but that's not in this project, that is separate from this project, and we have, we have already reduced the number, this was a $250,000 project, and we are reducing it now to, can't remember the exact number, but it's 180-some, 85,000 to accommodate for two emergency repairs we've done on concrete already and those repairs.
Well, I, and my feeling is, if we're not gonna do anything to those, because there's some, you know, yeah, there's a couple real bad spots, and there's some bad, there's a lot of stuff needs worked in the, in the original part of town, and if, if we're not gonna do anything in those spots, I'm not gonna vote for this.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate your point, Ron, I will say, just looking at the map, the opposite, to frame it the other way, there isn't anything other here on, on, on the repair bid that's on a new development within the last 10 or 15 years, everything is in that, the old part of town, but Adams, Tyler, Van Dorn, I mean, a lot of that older part of town, I mean, so it's not, I know the narrative is all the money goes towards the newer developments, and that's not true here, just, right, but I appreciate your...
Yeah, well, you could call the original part of town anything that was built before 1900, but I don't want to go back quite that far. But, you know, stuff that's been here since the 50s and 60s and hasn't been touched since the asphalt was put on in the 70s, I think that needs some attention, too, other than, other than stuff that's all concrete within, I don't care if it's within the last 30 years, because the other stuff's back 50 and 60.
The other thing that I would add to that, that we haven't been able to show them in the past, is the information Mike provided, January-ish timeframe, maybe it was end of the year, with the big, big, big project that's showing how we're gonna get there, and we didn't have those numbers even, you know, a year ago at this time, so I think at least we can show that there's a game plan, there's been active conversations with Polk County about how that's possibly gonna work, and tie in with some of the other work if we can make that happen, so, yeah.
And these are small, these are the small street repairs, and we're talking reconstruction on those, Ron, is what we're talking. I know there can be a few repairs made, I understand that, but they need full reconstruction done.
I know they do, I know they do, but in the meantime, we can't, like the email we got this week, or at least I did, we can't have people worried about walking down the street, because, you know, there's no sidewalks either, so we have to do something. And if, and if we are indeed gonna cap them and at least make them look presentable for a while, that, that makes it a little easier, but if that's...
Cabin is a trouble spot.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, but eventually, we're gonna cap, redo everything, correct?
Yeah, that's what, we have to have, devise a plan for that, yes.
But if that's two, three years down the road, in the meantime, we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah.
Because if we're doing something in other parts of town, we can't ignore these parts of town. Am I making any sense, probably? So is there an answer to that?
As far as if we're doing them?
If, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna get some attention in the, in these bad spots in the rest of town?
I think we've got, my personal opinion would be, we've got more attention on them right now than we have even 12 months ago, based on the plan that was put together, dollar amount figures, and conversations with Polk County about what we're gonna do moving forward. I mean, I had conversations with Kathleen just this last week about it, so I would say, I would say yes, and not to mention that, like Mike also mentioned, that I know that, because we spoke to it, but that they did jump on two emergency repairs, you know, here, within the last month, six weeks, you know, things that just had to be fixed, that, you know, if something is, needs to be done today, jumping on it and getting it done.
And like you say, the, I was asked to give, you know, five trouble spots, and that was either, I think that was number two on the list, definitely is an overlay, and we had to come up with a plan for that on those areas of town that you're discussing right now.
But again, we're not sure when that's gonna happen, correct?
No, we, no, we don't, it would be discussed at the next budget year with our next, whatever the next project would be. But I have some repairs going in, but it's outside of this contract here, it would be under my normal budget of repair in the right of, out of the road, use trust.
And part of the other issue in the original part of town, Mike, is the manholes and the other issues that have to be done there prior to us coming in and doing the overlay.
Right, that's correct, yes.
That's a couple phases, getting that done.
Yeah, there has to be infiltration protection on those manholes before an overlay takes place, it can all happen within the same contract.
But if, if, we got the same email, I think we did, on, on North Third, and the sidewalks there, I think that's been covered. To me, I'm a little bit more sympathetic to some of the other Second Street, Summer, some of those roads, than, than maybe spending both of those projects worth the money on, on a three or four-block stretch, it's like, I, I, it is a need, and I want to get that done, too, but I think things like Second and Summer, those are the two that stick out to me, so I think, I don't know if that'd be a little bit, but I trust Mike's opinion.
But at this point, we're just putting together construction agreements and bids and that, and then we can see where we're at, right? I need a motion on three.
So moved.
Facken.
Roll call.
Vogel.
Yes.
Walters.
Same.
Anderson.
No.
Sarchet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Motion carries, item four, consider motion to approve proposal from Hinson Consulting LLC, amount of $9,200 for certain services related to the selection of a city administrator. Motion, please.
Hold on. Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sarchet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Vogel.
Yeah. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries, next item is item seven, reports and particulars. So I do have a couple proclamations that I'll read, and can't believe somebody's not here for the Arbor Day proclamation. I think we get him in a couple weeks, I would say, that's what I thought, I, yeah, anyway. Now, therefore I, Jason Morris, Mayor of City of Polk City, I would do hereby claim April 26th as Arbor Day. The City of Polk City Iowa, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, lighten the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations, and I know somebody who will be planting trees on that day, most likely with the elementary kids, as he has every year. We also have Municipal Clerks Week, May 5th through the 11th. Jenny was a little weird, I think, too many are, she knows. Now, therefore I, Jason Morris, Mayor of City of Polk City, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2008, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Municipal Clerk Jenny Gibbons and our Deputy City Clerk Becky Leonard, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform, the exemplary dedication communities they represent. Thank you for all your hard work. Other reports, I'm gonna sort of, Don?
A couple items, as you know, on the consent agenda, we've approved the resignation of the IT clerk. We did have a meeting with Orion, they do a lot of our IT work already, we met with them last Wednesday, I believe it was, they provided us with a draft contract, we've sent on to the attorney for review, they've got some comments, so we'll need to work those comments out before we bring back, but our intent right now would be bring back a new agreement with Orion to provide IT services, and not look to replace that, this down. Second item is, there's been legislation proposed in the state, currently referred to as House File 773, it's a taxation bill, property taxation bill, just some of the highlights of it.
Lowlights.
Lowlights could be a concern.
Yeah. What else?
Generally, what it will do is remove the current levy limits that cities have, such as the 800 general fund, and roll those together, and then it will limit your growth to 2% growth a year, and it will take into account the general fund, the trust and agency fund, and the emergency fund. I don't believe the city, Polk City uses the emergency fund, but a lot of cities also use that, roll those all together, and it will allow you to capture new growth, so any new construction would be on top of that 2%, so for a community like Polk City, you do have some new growth, you still be able to capture that in tax value. There's concern about the employee benefits being rolled into that, because you don't have a lot of control over particularly healthcare, one of those items. Debt service and capital projects are excluded, so if you do a bond issue for a capital project, that would not be under that 2% cap. The other major item out of that is that the, there would be a cap of no more than 25% of budgeted expenditures would be allowed to be in your reserves. So, for example, wasn't, sorry, Polk City has approximately a $3 million general fund budget, your fund balance could end up at the end of fiscal year being no more than 25% of that $3 million. Currently, Polk City does exceed that amount. The, this is information from the Legislative Services Agency, they did do an analysis that the average tax rate Iowa cities over 18 years point percent. So that would indicate that cities have not been abusive of the rate, despite this effort to, to stymie growth. So this is, I think, legislation that is concerning a lot of cities that have been making an effort with their legislators to stop this or at least get it changed, in fact, cities and counties, it does not affect any of the other taxing states, this very, broad law for any of the other entities that have tax, or. On the positive side, I did hear today that the Senate version and the House version differ enough that not sure that they can get together and resolve the legislation this session, although they're still trying to end the session at the end of this week. But it can always be last-minute items, so don't know for sure, but a little bit of positivity.
Sorry, I was gonna bring this up, too, the Senate version did pass out a subcommittee on, on Thursday, so, and I don't know which, all we could, but I'm just gonna be a little pointed personally.
Yeah, and this, this, the House for...
Thanks for the update, I think.
Not a number percent, sir, but, well, since you have more to add to that, I guess I'll add...
So, we, we talked about this a couple different places, the MAC had been, gotten an update from League of Cities, also in the MAC, there's a couple city council people who are lobbyists and have their finger on the pulse, and there's a significant push to get something done around property taxes at the State House, so my interpretation of that is for them to do something that doesn't affect them in any way, but significantly impacts us, so they can say they did something without have to constrain themselves in any way. So it started out as, just to add a little color on, what Don said is an index, and that didn't go as far, they talked about 2%, there's some, I think one of the versions had 3%, but it does, one, I don't think it accomplishes a ton anyway, but two, it puts us in a tough spot where we are, as low as... So it started out as, just to add a little color on, what Don said is an index and that didn't go as far, they talked about two percent, I think one of the versions had three percent, but it does, one, I don't think it accomplishes a ton anyway, but two, it puts us in a tough spot where we are, as low as we are. Despite the fact that we're growing like we are, it paints us in a corner. So if we were to have a fire truck and a couple of positions come on, given our small, low rate, low levy rate that we have, that would probably have to be stretched out, again, in a worst case scenario. I know there's evolving exclusions to this, but it's just a, in my opinion, it's a horribly poor use of state resources to fight over an issue that is nothing more than pushing it down to, you know, in the spirit of bigger government telling smaller government what they're supposed to do and not fixing their own house. This is probably even worse example than in the post office. Something that we're gonna have to probably, something's going to pass, whether it's this year or next year was the notion, so I think that. It's just gonna make it tougher in the budgeting process and something that we're gonna.
Anything else from your point of view? Ron, anything?
No.
Anything down here? Yeah? Amy? Okay.
Kudos to the minor updates to the council package, these cultural changes, nice reorganization, appreciate that. What's out there?
What kind of tweak?
Good, good, nice season, most changes and then condolences to Amy Beatty and her family. Tough times right now. Think about it.
Just gonna throw that same comment out and hope that a loss from Phil Stowe from Wind Water Works as well as Amy. Couple things I have, we had, our chamber had their luncheon last month. I know much, Jamie just loves just being called to the center of attention, just as she did after the chamber luncheon, but Jamie did a really nice job talking about all of the good things happening in and around the library. And it was amazing to see the improvements that have been done up there in the last couple of years, so kudos to you and your staff. It was a, it was a good presentation as well as the guy, Chad from Big Creek, not the guy, Chad, Big Creek, but anyways, good presentation and appreciate all you guys are doing up at the library. Well done. I know you said you don't like the public speaking part of it, but you did very good, so, yeah, good program. The other thing was on the IT thing, just real quick, and I think this is important, is that as part of the GIS, that one of Mike's employees, Tommy, has been doing a wonderful job, kind of taking on the GIS stuff. And Mike, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, but it's become a really good resource. Tommy's doing a good job with this and I think he needs to be recognized.
Absolutely. I mean, it's still working the same as we, it was when we changed it, when we took it away from the IT position. And, you know, Snyder, we're in partnership one hundred percent with those folks. They're putting, Jared, boss, thank you goodness gracious, you know, he's putting it on our GIS system, the plating, the utilities, that type of stuff. But Tommy is stepping up and he does the maintenance of it. Like today, when we find in valves that are off a little bit, he's writing all that stuff down when we're doing lane blushing and he's repairing all that in that GIS system, that constant. The one thing that I do want to recognize him for is when he came here, we put him on the sign inventory that was kind of on again, off again, on again because of our employee situation. But Tommy come in and he took that and he did complete that. Actually, it was last fall, it was complete and I really probably should have reported that earlier because that's a big accomplishment for our department, that's a big accomplishment for him, so. Anyway, yes.
He wasn't hired to do the GIS, but he's doing a really good job with it.
He's doing a very good job.
Anybody else down here have anything else?
Mike, water main blushing.
Oh, yeah.
We had a really great day today. We moved through it pretty quickly, the main seemed to be fairly clear, so that moves us ahead. So anyway, we're just under half done probably already in one day, so that was a very good day. And then just remember cleanup day is a Saturday.
You're gonna see some people coming through here. But they help out, it's kind of like. Anything on your part?
I just announced that we'll have Tim Corey's retirement celebration on, for his thirty years and nine months of service, Sunday, April twenty-eighth, from one thirty to three thirty in the community room. So encourage everyone to come to that. We'll have a little presentation for him at the very beginning.
Jamie, anything else, Kevin, library? Anybody? That, Ron, I'll pitch to you.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Somebody beat him to the punch here not so long ago.
I think it was Jeff Ambrose. That's him.
Keep it on your toes.
Whoop me out once a year, we're gonna do that.
Realize you want to be clicker.